The other thing that I believe, Ms. Clausen, you asked me about is check on crossing guards. I did have a conversation with T-Doc. He did not feel like there was any restrictions about us putting crossing guards wherever we want. Now, he clearly said there's some dangerous situations and, you know, that we need to be careful where we work with folks or where we place folks. But what he did say, and this is not official recommendation because he's not, you know, he's not speaking in terms of T-Doc, but what he said, if we did put a crossing guard there, we could put one right there in the lane closest to the school and then motion people through when that light captured them on the other end. So then they could get across whichever, what bound, what south and north toward the school? What lanes that one? Does anybody know right up here?
We don't.
Westview. So if you're going toward.
If you're going toward.
It's toward south.
Okay. So put somebody in the south lane so when that light blocked them on the south lane, then motion people across to get across the road there and then go on. When the light turned green, then hold everybody. And then that would probably work. So if you wanted to put a crossing guard, you could. He seemed to have the same observation that I had. Is that if there's no law enforcement officer there, people never stop there anyway. They don't stop at that stop sign. When there is law enforcement, people stop and then it backs everybody up. Everybody kind of slows and goes. And so we're not encouraging people not to obey the stop sign, but that's the thing that holds us up. So most of the time, that is not a problem. But if the board wants to, we can go ahead and put a crossing guard there. Tracy, that cost is pretty minimal, isn't it?
It didn't take very long until we got home today.
I mean, it's not included. If the board were not forced to go with that, we can. If you want to see how the rest of this year goes and people get used to it.
Have we had accidents out there? Have we had anybody's problem for use of.
Mainly it was backup of traffic on 160 toward, you know, where on the merchant screen is. They had like 30 minutes delay to get from there to the school.
I'd be a happy medium, not a police officer and nobody and okay, that crossing guard, just say I went the rest of the year and then make a decision for next one.
We can do that if you guys want to. We can look for a crossing guard and. But now.
Just try it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Look, it'll be good. I'll build track, see how it works.
Let's do that then. We will, we'll look for somebody and.
You've got them out there at WIT and stuff?
We do. We got them at WIT and then we have them.
We don't have them at Union Heights.
We don't have them at Union Heights. No, that's not really that much of a problem. We have a pretty long queue in line on that secondary road. We just don't, you don't have that problem there. And the volume is not bad, but the problem we have with Westview is the volume 25 is pretty high. Well, on the road and number fits coming in. So we will try a crossing guard there and see, see what works.
See that works.
Okay. We can do that. Madam Chair, I believe you brought that one up. Do you have any other questions about that?
No, that's fine. I appreciate you checking that out. I can report back to the couple of people that you.
You're very welcome. The board knows that we wrote that ELC grant and it is epidemiologists or epidemiology.
Laboratory.
Laboratory. Corporation.
No, it's.
Well, regardless.
Epidemiology laboratory. I can't remember that scene out.
The thing to remember is 1.7 million dollars. So, so we got 1.7 million dollars for that. That does provide us with the opportunity for testing. So right now, this is our plan. Well, first of all, the first one is not going to be in the coach school. The first one is it's strictly voluntary. There's no pressure. There's no incentive. We're not, we're not encouraging people to do this. They can do it if they want to. Now, because when we first sent out this information, we had some individuals say, my kid better not be tested without my permission. You know, we never said that. And so it's strictly voluntary and if this benefits the parents, that's fine. Right now, we don't have all of those tests in. So right now, all we're doing is testing our own staff and the staff members can test their children if they want to. If they don't want to, they don't have to. But just as I told you earlier, we had one of our administrative assistants come in, just got a head coat, was in a very compact office. Said, but I'll test just to see. She tested immediately. It tested positive, so, you know, we sent her on home and probably saved four or five people from getting the virus. So if staff members want to do that, they can. If they want to test their own children, they can. Later, when we get some more of these tests in, we're going to open it up to all students. If it's an elementary or middle school child, the parent actually has to come to school and do the test, you know, do the swabbing and those kinds of things. We'll call them, say that your child is presenting some symptoms. You can either come and get them and take them home, get your own test, do it at home, do whatever, or we've got a test here for you. You can do the swab, we'll send it off and then tomorrow we'll know. We're not going to make parents do it, but it will save them $25, $30. It will save them the trouble of going to, you know, one of the local vendors and getting this. And for some of our folks, $30, $40 a test when you've got four or five kids is, is a big, is a big deal. So we're just doing this as a service. The state did approve a certain list of vendors that said they could supply the kits and do the testing. The vendors that we've got later on that we're asking the board to approve, it come off of one of those state bills. So what they will do is they will send us the test and then they'll process the test and get it back to us in 24 hours.
Yeah, I was gonna ask how long it took, so you said 24 hours.
Yeah. Now, Clyde, the ones we got right now are the rapid tests, so they are immediate.
Rapid.
So we can tell you within 10 minutes.
Okay.
But the ones that the grant was written for has that little bit higher, a little lettering piece.
Okay. So how many tests are we getting for that 1.7 million?
We won't spend all that 1.7 million. We will spend. Mr. Smith, do you assume we use even a hundred thousand dollars of that on that?
Well, we, we wrote it, I think Kelly wrote it to be somewhere around eight, nine hundred thousand. I don't know that we'll use that much though.
I, I think if this goes with some of the models, it's going to go through quickly because everybody's getting it. So I think probably within four to six weeks, this strain will be out. Now, the next strain may come, but this strain will probably be out. And we can use this for some other purposes. Did we get permission on the mobile units?
I think we're still waiting on that. I think that was a revision that we put in. We had.
One of the things that we wrote into the grant was that we saw that John Hay is one of our most crowded schools that we have. We've got everybody crammed in there together. So what we asked them in this, you can do it for virus mitigation stuff, like HVAC systems and other things. So what we asked them is could we buy one or two mobile units or rent one or two mobile units or buy them and then put out at John Hay so we can spread those kids out some. It's something that we may need anyway with the new housing developments. So if they give us approval of that, we will use some of that money for that. But we don't anticipate 1.7 million dollars going to testing. But we got it for testing right now.
So we don't spend it while it happens to.
We'll spend it.
Okay.
We will find some. We can do it on HVAC systems. We can do it on school nurses. We can do it on a lot of things. So we will expend the money. Has that got a two-year window?
No, sir. That's July 1st.
Okay. So we've got to spend quick.
July 1st.
Do you have to specify what the dollars are being used for?
Yes, we do.
You know, your testing kit, but you also have supplies and.
Yeah.
Also include staff in time or.
No. Well, if you use it like a school nurse, if you bought a school nurse, we'd probably do that, but we got to get pre-approval first because we don't want to spend any money and then later find out it's not covered and then have to repay that.
Yeah, I thought that'd be important.
So we're going to get through this little testing piece. Then if they let us do the mobile units, Mr. Smith, that was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I think it was, you know, Hugh was working on that. I, I want to say he had around 400,000.
I thought it was closer to half a million for the mobile units were set up and everything. So if you do that, that takes a good chunk of it. So we'll keep you informed of that. Just the biggest thing right now, we got to approve the grant so that we can actually go forward with the testing. Madam Chair, we're up for the action items they want.
Before we proceed, I was going to ask you, first of all, thank you for your report for the work of the staff. I know there's been a lot of time pulling all this information together, but it helps us make a better decision. Tell us about the bus out on, I saw this last meeting, the bus out here.
Oh, yeah.
Next to the stadium. Want to tell us about that?
Yes, if, if you all have looked out here, we've got that CTE bus and Chuck and Daniel are working on that right now. And all that's been done through grant money. And so what's going to end up happening is that that bus, we've taken all the seats out and we've got different stations on there. So when they finally get everything in there, you would be able to get on the bus and you could take a welding torch, a simulated welding torch, and you would have the bobbles on and you'd actually be able to weld to see if that was something you liked. There's a, Dr. Gibson, we might have to get you to come out and teach the aeronautics. So there's a.
I could get it.
There's a place where you can fly a plane. There are, what are some of the other things?
There are a lot of simulators for manufacturing jobs.
Precision machinery, some of that kind of stuff.
Computer programming and programming, the manufacturing equipment, the robots, a lot of robotics.
Yeah. So the bottom line is we drive this bus to an elementary school. Then we invite classes out one at a time. Those classes will go through there and say, man, I really like welding or I really like this medical field or I really like this. And then that might encourage somebody to take up the CTE. So we don't have all the modules in there right now because the supply chain has quit or stopped a couple of things from coming in. But when it does come in, we're going to take the board out and you guys can go through and do, you can have the first tryout.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Turn your attention to item number eight on the agenda. It's your action items for approval. Item number eight, one is the request proposal bids and purchases contracts. If you have those out on there, A, B, C, D, A, it's mostly computers and literacy professional help.
I'd like to approve eight, one, A, B, and C.
Now, the motion of Mr. Green to approve eight, eight, one, A, B, and C. Is there a motion, a second to his motion?
No.
Second by Dr. Gibson. Do we have any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate a saying aye. Pose lights on. Motion carries unanimously. Eight point three or eight point two is your captain projects professional services agreement for scuffle work, Mr. Harrison. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Dr. Sonia. Is there a second to his motion?
No.
Second by Dr. Gibson. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate a saying aye. Pose lights on. Motion carries unanimously. Eight point three are your financials. Ms. Andrew can take care of those for us. Is there a motion to approve their one?
Motion to approve eight point three, A and B.
Mr. Kinder has a motion on the floor to approve eight, four, eight point three, A and B.
I'd like to make amendment on the general portion of amendment. I'd like to see the 40,000 go to student appreciation and then that still leave, you've got 13,599 in there for teachers, so leave that for that. Few 40,000 coming in, go to student appreciation. That'd be used for the middle school banquet, hopefully the top notch one and other things similar to that. And I hope we can make do, you write a letter to Utrust thanking them for the money. I'm not sure if we've done that to pass, we need to do that. Make sure, do a banner at the banquet and honor all them, but don't make that money.
Have we got anybody love, used to, we had a few of you, nobody stepped up or been asked to step up?
I'm just asking. The last year, of course, we had it separated out and so that was a little bit less money. I mean, we've got, we can use some of the Utrust money if you guys wanted to do that, it's perfectly fine.
Do you think they'll go along with it? Sure.
I don't, we've already sent that in, but they, it'd be amenable to an adjustment for that.
Well, we've only done the initial application for the larger or the more detailed description is to come, so we could, we could amend it in the next section.
Well, I think this year, a good year to do a appreciation for the students and we still got money left for staff too.
I'm confused. Where did you send it into? You were talking about sending it in. Where do you send it into?
There's an application that Utrust has online and it's a two-step process. The first process is are you going to do smaller individual projects or are you just going to do something district-wide? So we sent the first one and said we just do a district-wide teacher appreciation. But, and then the second one's a little bit more detailed, but I think they're pretty amenable to change.
Well, Mr. Green's on that, so I don't think it should be a problem.
Do you need a motion to second that or what?
No, we had a motion. We just needed to.
I amend the motion. Include that be earmarked for, for student appreciation, the 40,000.
I'll second, I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Let me ask you this too. I have a question on it. On the travel, it went up from 2250 to, went up $17,000 to 19250. Where, when you talk about the travel, what is that?
They utilize that for any staff development or industry travel for teachers between schools or speech pathologists between schools. This particular one can also be used in the special education program for that. So that is for their staff.
So I mean, just if it's travel, I mean, just the price it has has gone up.
But has it gone up that much?
Well, I mean, that's hard.
Well, I bring a birth rate still the same.
Uh huh.
But she utilizes this money every year to supplement her budget that's existing in the general purpose then.
Okay.
Tracy, we had more people this year, don't we?
Driving?
Especially in that picture with the fall apart.
I'm sure we did for our Esther.
That was like 17,000.
And then there was one, and she contracted outless this year and so now it's on us for the travel piece. Is that part of it?
Do you have any other questions?
Load on the amendment.
Okay.
Tracy, you understand what we're doing?
Taking the 40,000 from staff to student appreciation for this year.
You know, that's the middle school banquet should be coming out there. I'll set that up first place.
Okay.
I just want to take, does the banquet cost that much? Is that?
Oh, I'm not saying that I'll use it just for student appreciation, not for your other schools or.
We'll do a top notch scholars banquet and then whatever money we got left over, we'll make sure to give to you.
Mr. Smith, coordinate that.
I just want.
Hospital or.
Scholarship and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just add.
So if we haven't got that.
But we got the, has anybody talked about Spas by the way? That's the reason why we have it.
Yes, sir. We did.
It's got like.
It's locked in.
Good, good. So now you're.
I think Trigby may be co-sponsor with us. I mean, that's good.
We'll ask them.
I mean, they probably will.
They have been good about helping us. Problem is they're good about helping us follow us.
We could even join them.
And they, they've always done that since I think we're co-sponsors.
No, you don't have to follow them. If discussion is over.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? The motion is to.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Just load on that first.
Okay. The amendment to the motion down here.
You've already got a motion and you got.
I see.
You've got a amendment.
Second to the.
Just hold and say.
Load on the amendment first.
I thought we got ready to go a motion and second, but just.
So we have to vote for it.
You got to load on the amendment first.
We all had to say aye.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. Motion carries.
Now load on the original motion. That's language.
Okay. All those in favor of the original motion, if it has been amended, please, we have to say aye.
Aye.
And pose lights on. All those in favor of the amendment, motion carries unanimously. All right. We are moving into eight point four acceptance of the early literacy network grant received from TDOE. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dr. Sonia. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Gibson. All those in favor, or is there any discussion?
I'd like to thank Buddy and his group for, you know, again, getting in another grant, $8,000 to get out of the district so that Sam Young and his staff.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. Motion carries unanimously. Eight point five is the school calendar for 2022 and 23. We need to approve that. Is there a motion to do so?
That says originally.
Yes.
I make motion approved.
Motion by Dr. Green.
Second.
Second. Second by Dr. Sonia. Is there any discussion? You know, when people challenge you on the calendar, remember it's a committee that is district-wide, so we involve teachers and other staff in that discussion.
Madam Chair.
I just tell them, Kyle Rock.
That's good.
We did, we sent comments to you guys that we got. This was the least amount of comments that we had on the calendar.
You came up with the perfect ones, presented to us.
And so, you know, of course, some of the comments, a lot of folks wanted to start a little bit later, but we're going to finish till Christmas. We just, we can't do that. Some wanted to shorten Thanksgiving, but they wanted to shorten Thanksgiving and then start later. You know, and so, and then full days for PD, which we did include and some time if they were for breaks. Madam Chair, members of board, I think we did the best we could and I think the majority of people are okay with it. So.
All in favor of that motion, please.
Aye.
Okay. Pose lights on. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is eight point six is your COVID day extension. COVID day extension. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Sonia. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Pose lights on. Okay. Next, we have eight point seven, AEL letter of agreement for COVID testing.
That's what I was.
That's what Dr.
Motion approved.
Approved.
Second.
Motion and second by Dr. Sonia. Motion by Mr. Kinder. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Well, the next item on the agenda is eight point eight, and that is the Lincoln Heights or Lincoln Elementary land purchase. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Sonia. Second by Dr. Gibson. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item is eight point nine, update on superintendent search. The ad has been published and they're now taking, you know, interested parties and he's willing to review those and come back with individuals to report to the board. In the meantime, we need to come up with a schedule of how we want to deal with meeting the candidates and taking them to the community and so forth. So in the meantime, I'll get that information together and send it out to you.
I mean, I just guess we have.
I, I would not let it because the ad just been out. It's just been out about two weeks.
It posted Monday when we came back from Christmas and it will run through January 28th. So. Too much.
So I have a calling to him. We'll see, you know, I'm, I'll probably be in contact with you to get dates and when you're available. And anything specific that you want to know about the search, just send me and we'll work through it, get this going. Okay? Eight point one O is the tech bids for Hillcrest. Is there a motion to approve?
Eight point nine was not an action item.
No, it was just a report. Eight point one O is the tech bids for Hillcrest. Is there a motion to approve? Dr. Gibson has made a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Mr. Green. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. The motion carries unanimously. Eight point one one is the list elementary tech bids. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Dr. Sonia is the motion and Dr. Gibson, the second of the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose lights on. Okay. Now, all those in favor, do you have any information?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tomorrow, the future radio expo will be over at Water State Community College over there at the Expo Center. If you've never been there, that is a pretty phenomenal kind of thing. And of course, we do have some concerns with COVID numbers being so high, so we're worried about that. We're worried about a lot of things. We're worried about the east-west ballgame. We're worried about elementary ballgames. We're worried about a lot of things, but we made the decision to go forward because a lot of things were already in action. Kids, middle school kids get an opportunity to really explore some real neat kind of opportunities. And so if you want to come, more than welcome to come. We'd love to have you. Water State, we've got a engineering meeting for parents on January the 16th. Some of our local businesses said, said that we need more engineers in some of the local industries. And so we're working with Water State to create a program for our juniors and seniors that we will produce the very kids that some of these companies need out of this program. So when the kids graduate with us, they would be ready to go straight into any of these companies. School is going to be closed on the 17th, Martin Luther King Day. There's early dismissal on the 20th. We do have staff night out on February the 7th. We're trying to get some of the local vendors to give our staff members a little bit of a discount to just have a night out for parents. We will provide daycare for all of our staff members, so if you've got a kid or two, we'll keep those particular children and let you go out and just have the parents' night out and let you go out and just have a parent's night out that night. Now, this is for staff members, so cafeteria workers, custodians, teachers, instructional aides, whoever. So, if you do own a business and, and want to provide a discount to, to Hamlin County employees, uh, let us know, and then we will let people know so you can come out and, and eat there at that place. And we did it on a Monday night because we knew that would be a slow night for most folks and it wouldn't be competing with the, with the big crowds. Remember that our board meeting changed to February the 15th, so in February, we'll send you another reminder out, but the February meeting is going to be February the 17th. Scholars banquet is the 24th at 6:00, and we've already got, um, First Baptist Church reserved for that. Um, Miss Clausen asked me to do an update on HCXL. We didn't meet, uh, last week. Uh, it, it went actually fairly quick. Uh, they do have some money set aside for some teacher incentives and some different things later on in the year if we need them to. Uh, they've got the wine pantry banquet and some other things lined up, but HCXL is just moving forward and it really wasn't that great built to. Uh, like I said before, we will announce the three teachers of the year. And then, Mr. Smith, just remind me, of those three teachers, then how's the final teacher for the district selected?
Well, we really don't select a district teacher. We'll submit all three of those names to the region, and then they'll pick a region level teacher of the year.
So, our elementary, middle, and high school person will go forward and process the state, then of those three will determine one to go forward, uh, in that one. And like I said, we have done well. We've had some finalists the last several years. If you've not done your ethics form, that is due January the 31st. I know a couple of you have already done that, so.
Hey, I'm, I'm early this year, but.
Mr. Kinder, I think, got his in and Mr. Sadie's in. If you need the forms, let us know, uh, but do make sure you get them in for the 31st. It, it, it does kind of create a little bit of problem for you if you don't have them by the 31st, so. Madam Chair, that is all that I have to report.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Thank you. Thanks to each of you for being here tonight. You know, it's a cold evening and it's good to have you out, uh, taking interest in our school district. Uh, is there any other business to come forward this morning? Hearing none, I would say the main concern.
And Madam Chair, even though it's not official, uh, just so that everybody knows, um, I believe Cliff, this may be your last meeting, if you're going on to work maybe, uh, at another newspaper, so is this your last meeting?
Yeah.
We certainly have appreciated working with you, and we wish you the best. Yeah, exactly. Um, I, I really believe that Cliff has always been very honest and fair with us, uh, but he's always been very trustworthy. I have appreciated all the conversations with him. Uh, he has worked extremely well with us, so Cliff, just on, on behalf of our office, I think, and then speaking for the whole school board, we have enjoyed working with you. We wish you the very best, and so, good luck, and we hope things are great. And remember, you always got a home. If, if you are hard up for things to do on a second Tuesday in the month, you always come back to all board meetings. Oh, yeah, and we do have, uh, East High, they are honoring, uh, a couple of folks in. Does he know? This is not a surprise.
I, I don't know.
I'll send you the, the people that are drafting in, uh, but this is in East High Hall of Fame. So, that's Friday before the ballgame.
And there's a reception, 5:45 at East High.
This is right. This is right. What I will do, Carlene, remind me to send out an email. I'll give you the information because they are honoring some folks that you would know, and you may want to go out with that.
Some we know already.
Yeah.
Who's that? Oh, Jordan? Oh, wow. Oh, babe?
So, you do know that, then?
What?
Joseph.
No, he didn't.
I was the first one inducted, by the way, just so you know.
Okay, all right.
It's a repeated name.
All right, so they're inducting a couple of other people, so, um.
Now, do I know about that? No, I don't know who they are.
Well, I'm hesitant to say it out loud because I don't know.
Yeah, I saw an email today, but I, I'm brad, but I don't know who all that email was out.
I'll send it to you so that you'll know who it is and if that was a surprise. Keep me surprised.
Anything else?
Okay.
I read.
We've all.